I'd like to call to order the Board of City Commissioners, November the 16th, 2015. Call and roll, please, ma'am.
A.G., here.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra.
Here.
You're the mayor.
Okay, if you're able to stand, please stand with me and we will recite the Lord's Prayer for our invocation.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Linda, would you lead us in the flag?
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull several items for discussion tonight. Items B, E, G, and J.
Wait a minute, B?
E, G, and J.
Okay, that leaves A, C, D, F, G, H, I. Chair'll entertain a motion on those. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harret? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner A.G. Let's vote. Okay, let's take up item number B, acknowledged commission and related authorities' meeting schedule for 2016.
Mayor, the reason I've asked for this item to have some discussion on it is that I know that our UNICODE indicates that we're to have one meeting per month, and I know at this point in time that we have two meetings per month, and I've asked Phyllis and the city manager to pull when that changed, and I'd like for us to give consideration to go back to one meeting per month if at all possible. And I base that on the fact that our staff spends a considerable amount of time and effort to prepare for these meetings and to be here, and yes, I know that's their job. However, I would certainly like to myself have them focusing more on their work effort and for us to try to reduce the amount of time that we spend here at the city in these meetings. If that's all.
I'm not sure I know how to handle that meeting. I think we'd need somebody to look at it and study it or something and see.
We will soon.
Based on your load, so.
I've been on the question in 2000, I went to a meeting twice a month before then.
Well, she's just saying that. All I'm just saying is, is I could see it being a long one. If we did go to one, we'd have to maybe start earlier in the afternoon or something.
I'd like to just visit the thought. Let's get, if I could, ask the staff to just pull those documents and if we could look at when that changed and how much time we're looking at level of effort here on the staff spending here in these meetings.
So, I think potentially it's a good idea, Commissioner. My concern is not to have it scheduled and then we find out there's too, you know, we have once a month, there's too much to cover in one month. I'd almost like to sketch, schedule, at least for my calendar, to where I, you know, and then call it off, say there's not enough, or we can combine, or whatever, instead of just saying we're going to drop down to once a month.
Excuse me, it's my duty to advise you.
Okay.
That we've strayed off the post-up topic.
Yeah, we have.
Well, it is.
We have. Come on in, and then if you want, come back and be on the agenda next time.
Okay, so would you like to have that put on the agenda next time?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to move it, put item B on the agenda next time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, let's vote. Keith, you go.
I did.
Oh, we gotta push hard.
It's not the operator, it's the tech.
Motion carries. Okay, item number E, late lease renewals.
Well, I've already had this discussion with the city manager, and I'd noticed a number of things here, and I know Linda probably knows this, the city commissioner, A.G., really well, just like the city manager does. However, those of us who are looking at it from the outside, and I truly went over a lot of this information, and I try to review these each month whenever we have these renewals come up for the cabin leases, and I keep noticing that there's a variance in our renewal rates, as well as the dates that are on these agreements, and I notice that these are for 30-year periods that we have them. The one that I would like for the city manager at this point in time to pull and review at this point in time is the Violet Lease 016975. I believe the dates may be inaccurate. If we could have those just reviewed and dropped before the city commission at our next meeting, I would appreciate it. All the others, I have no concern about. I move that we.
Gina, which one's you talking about, Justin?
Lot 9.
Lot 9, okay.
15201, Echo Room.
Okay, your motion is to, are you wanting to make a motion to have that item moved to next week, next meeting?
To pass all the leases, with the exception of that one.
And the reason was the date is incorrect?
I believe the date on that agreement may be inaccurate.
Yes.
Michael, you were trying to say something?
Oh, I was just wondering, does, would it change anything if the, if we passed it now, if we renewed it for this date? Would that change anything? Are they, how long do these leases, are they for one year?
30 years.
30 years leases, yes.
Okay, so are we trying to get them all in the same 30-year term, like starting this year, 15?
They all have different dates, Commissioner. Some started in 2012, some in 2013, some in 2014.
I don't, will it affect anything if we just move it to next, next meeting?
No, it won't affect anything for this.
Okay, so we have a motion to move it to the next meeting. Have a second?
I'll vote that one.
Okay, yeah, that one. Okay, we have a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Dykstra, let's vote. We're just moving it.
We're just moving the one, but we're approving all the others, is that what?
Yes.
We've already approved, no, we haven't. We've got to vote to move that one, then we'll have to vote to approve all the others. Okay? Okay, so we're going to vote, you made a motion and she made a second to move that one to the next meeting.
To the next agenda.
Okay, so let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Now, let's vote on all the other leases, which are.
I approve the lease.
Move the rest of the leases other than that one.
Second.
Okay, then a motion by Vice Mayor Harret and a second by Commissioner Dykstra. Let's vote on that matter. Motion carries. Okay, then let's move to J, budget amendment.
G.
I'm sorry, G. Okay. I thought you said J.
The Shawnee Hospital Authority is a public trust, and they're asking us to approve their appointments, and I recognize they have that authority to recommend who they would like on their board. However, I believe we, as a city, have the responsibility to understand who we are appointing. I respectfully ask that the following of the Shawnee Hospital Authority to provide bios for all of your nominees, and to understand that I am asking this action be tabled till such time as that information has been received by the city. I'd also ask that the city manager look at our current appointment application process. I'm asking for two things to be clarified, a process allowing for the city to preview all external boards and authorities, applicants, appointees, in a consistent manner, one that ensures the city understands who they are asking to appoint, a bio being a necessary part of this application. The second part of the city manager, I'm asking that a application appointment form for all vacancies be placed on the city's homepage for easy access, and we had this discussion earlier, Justin, and if you could ensure that bios are attached so that we can see down those applications, I'd certainly appreciate it.
So, are you making a motion on this matter? Is that, was all that your motion?
I'm asking that this be tabled till the next time till the Shawnee Hospital Authority provide bios for their nominees.
Well, what I would, I mean, I understand you're making a motion, but I don't understand if we're going to change the process from the way we've done it in the past, why we couldn't go ahead and approve these and then have the city manager look at the process and do that in the future, for future appointees, because we've been, up until now, we've been approving these based on the application review, not having a bio.
Most of these, this is a second term, too.
And you know these people, I mean, their background, their history?
Sure, uh-huh, yeah, I know all of them.
So, we're all well-informed except for me, so each of you are.
Yeah, I know all three.
Well, not informed, I just know them all three very well.
Well, it's, again, I'm asking for bios for these individuals, and yes, we could pass it based on the receiving these hereafter, or however the process needs to work, but we need to change this process to where we can get some information on the individuals that are being submitted to the city.
So, you moved to?
I moved that we pass this action based with the understanding that the bios from these three nominees will be provided to the city, and that this process will be looked at by the city manager.
So, we have a motion on the floor, okay? And that's not to approve these, you're saying, till you get a bio?
We approve them, but they have to give a bio, too. I think that's.
That's fine. But then she's wanting all the future ones?
Yeah.
Are you just talking about these three now?
These three.
Okay.
And with the process to be considered to be looked at.
And we'll take a look at the process and have it for discussion in a further, in a meeting, because we can't discuss it here. But my only concern is the process, we don't want to inhibit qualified people from serving, because already we have a problem of getting people to serve, right? So, if we make it cumbersome, and I agree, it'd be a, bio should not be cumbersome. Okay.
We really need to wait on this till it's supposed to do a new thing.
Right, so, okay, so let's just take this one right here, okay? She's saying, you're now saying go ahead and approve these?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
From the plot, what condition?
With the understanding they submit a bio.
On these people?
On these individuals.
After that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
So.
Second.
Huh?
Wait, she, you made the motion, we got a second. Okay.
Not hearing a second?
We want to approve them, but the condition is they give a bio later, but we're still going to renew them, right?
Sure.
If that, if that motion doesn't pass, then the other motion will be approved as is, and then we can still have a future agenda to talk about the process. I think that there's concern that we don't want to put conditions on approval.
Put it on the next agenda or something, then. Discuss that, the process.
Now, the motion, if I heard it correctly, is that we are wanting to, the motion is to approve these with conditions that they supply a bio. Is that what I heard?
I had requested bios. Commissioner A.G. had indicated pass them without the bios, and I still would like to see bios.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? We approve these without a bio? I mean, with a bio?
Approved with bio to come later.
Bio to come later, okay.
We'll just renew them, and then, okay, I'll second it, sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by my Commissioner Dykstra. Motion fails.
So.
I move with adopted, appointees as recommended by.
Okay, so now we have a motion to approve these that were.
Recommended by.
Recommended, okay. So, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra. Okay, let's vote on that issue. Motion carries. Now, were there any other items that I overlooked?
J.
J.
Okay. All right, number J.
James, could you come educate me on the budget transfer for the library heat pump units? For some reason, I was thinking that the library had their own budget and that they did their own maintenance and repair, so if you could educate me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Cindy, you may have to help me out with this, but we do budget through our capital outlay monies to do repairs at the library, and these repairs, one of them was submitted into the budget for this last year, but through the budget process and the lack of capital funds, we couldn't, and it's something I do normally every year to budget for replacement air conditioner in case something goes down, that way they have the money in there. But the capital outlay funds for the library come from our regular capital outlay monies. They don't have their own pool of money for repairs of that such.
Okay, so even the taxes that they receive, that doesn't go towards their maintenance or repair?
Their taxes that they receive?
They receive like this.
Further materials.
The only thing we pay, we pay for the building, we pay for cleaning, repair, and maintenance, it's the only thing we pay for the library, it's our, it's our building.
Well, yeah, on the furniture, too.
Right, we've replaced the furniture in the past, too, but as James says, it's not, but it wasn't budgeted this year for three units, and what we did was, James had some extra money, our guys did some of the work, so we had some extra money in a project. We had a couple other AC units that were budgeted for, but we're going to move that money to the library fund.
Yeah, their air conditioner blew up, though, down.
They lost three of them, actually.
They lost all their conditioning, just on.
That's all I needed, thanks.
Okay, then the chair'll entertain a motion to approve item number J.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. At this time, we need to encourage citizens' participation. Please come forward, and if you'd like to share something with us, or if there's something you think we need to know about that we're not aware of, we welcome you to come forward. Okay, no one coming forward, then I'll move on to item number three, its presentation by the city manager to employee of the month, Jeffrey Pack, Water Distribution.
Mr. Pack, come on up, sir. It's my pleasure to present the employee of the month for November 2015 to Water Distribution Maintenance Worker 3, Mr. Jeffrey Pack. Jeff has been with the city of Shawnee since July of 2011. He said he works hard every day and gives 100%, takes pride in serving our community and the city. He will keep improving to be the best employee he can be, and is very thankful to the city of Shawnee for giving him the opportunity to be part of this team. Recently, he assisted another department for a few months while an employee was out. He stepped into the position with little assistance and was willing to go above and beyond his duties. The department was very fortunate, he was allowed to work with them, and more fortunate that Jeff had the teamwork attitude and the can-do attitude that he brings. I feel Jeff is an asset to the city and is very deserving of this award. Jeff is married and has one daughter, enjoys hanging out with family and friends, riding four-wheelers, hunting, fishing, working on the farm, and skeet shooting. Mr. Pack, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Head, is why can't that beautiful daughter up there in the front? I mean, they sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number four is to consider resolution of appreciation to Chief Russell France for over 30 years of service to the city of Shawnee, and a presentation to Russell France. The chair'll entertain a motion on this resolution. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harret? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got lots of seconds, all of us just second. All of us second, okay.
She beat us.
Okay. Chief France, if I could ask you to come forward?
Somebody had him going to Utah today, figuring me out or somewhere.
You know, before I read this, I mentioned today that we are so blessed in our city that we can lay down at night and feel safe. It's our wonderful police department and our wonderful fire department. I don't, I've never laid down at night and feel unsafe, because we have great people and great leaders like you, and you're desperately going to be missed, you know, but we want to wish you the best, and the mountains are going to be a lot better place by you and your family going there, and we won't forget you, I will tell you that. Listen, let me read the resolution. It's a resolution expressing appreciation to Russell Russ France for over 30 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy be presented to Russell France. Whereas February the 9th, 1987 was a significant day in the city of Shawnee, for the reason that Russell Russ France commenced his employment with the city as a Shawnee police officer. Prior to that, he worked part-time as municipal bailiff marshal for Judge Robert Jones, beginning on October the 15th, 1985. During his career, Russ achieved the rank of senior police officer in 1992, corporal in 1996, sergeant in 2001, lieutenant in 2005, and appointed police chief in 2008. Russell France is elected to retire effective December the 1st, 2015. Whereas Russell France has demonstrated his ability to meet the challenges given him, dedication and loyalty throughout the years.
That's it.
And whereas it is both fitting and proper for the city of Shawnee to recognize Russell France for his many contributions to the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express to Russell France their great appreciation for his many years of service to the city and its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy hereof be presented to Russ with best wishes for many future years of good health and happiness. The best to you. Would you like to say?
I must say, it's been a, quite an honor and a blessing to have served this community. It's been very good to my family, my wife, and myself, and we appreciate all that you've done for us, all that you've done for the officers and the department. Shawnee truly is a, is a good city. It's got great staff and great employees across the board, so we're looking forward to a change in, in our lives, but I know that you all continue doing great things, and I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
You moved to the second, didn't vote.
Oh, I forgot to vote on it.
I think that means we can take it back when you didn't leave.
Okay, I've just, it's been pointed out to me by the city attorney that we did not vote on it, so we, you can't leave. Do we need to vote on it, Mary Ann? Okay, let's, let's vote, I'm sorry. Yeah, it passed, sorry to see that happen. Okay, item number five is consider resolution of appreciation to Michael Jackson for over 27 years of service to the city of Shawnee, and a presentation to Mr. Jackson. I'm not sure he's here, but I'd still like to come down and read the presentation. So, if, we'll vote on this one right now. The chair'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harret? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra. Now, let's vote on this one, maybe the mayor will do it right.
Get you out of trouble.
Thank you. Motion carries. In case some of you do not know, Michael Jackson has been running, has been running the X-File, which is our number one, I think, tourist attraction in our city, so I wanted to, sorry he's not here, he's done a great job serving our city, and so I'll read the resolution today. A resolution expressing appreciation to Michael Mike Jackson for over 27 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy be presented to Michael Jackson. Whereas February the 1st, 1988 was a significant day in the city of Shawnee, for the reason that Mike Jackson commenced his employment with the city at the heart of Oklahoma Exposition Center. During his career, Mike was promoted to supervisor in 1990, ground superintendent in August 2007, operations manager in 2007, and Mike is elected to retire now on November the 30th, 2015. Whereas Mike Jackson has demonstrated his ability to meet the challenges given him, dedication and loyalty throughout the years, and where it is both fitting and proper for the city of Shawnee to recognize Mike Jackson for his many contributions to the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express to Mike Jackson their appreciation for his many years of service to the city and its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy hereof be presented to Mike with his best wishes for many future years of happiness. Pass and approve this 16th day of November. Let's give a round of applause to him, he's always. Item number six is consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment for defined benefit plan for James Wilson. Chair'll entertain a motion, this is our normal procedure. Chair'll entertain a motion in this matter. Have a motion by Commissioner Dykstra? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number seven is consideration of approval of a preliminary plat for the Garage Restaurant located at 190 Mall Drive, Shawnee, OK. Case S 12-15, applicant Mohammed Khan, PE. Mr. Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. The applicant tonight is requesting preliminary plat approval for the Garage Restaurant, again, which is just south of Buffalo Wild Wings, just west Walmart there on Shawnee Mall Drive. The site is roughly .71 acres in size, rezoned September 8th this year, in order to fit the unique features of this, this site, instead of it being a part of the actual mall of the separate ownership, so rezoned to C3 appropriately. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat and reciprocal documents that come with it there and recommend approval. Essentially, on this site, back in 2008, it had been preliminary platted prior, much that same documentation and construction documents fit the same mold up pretty close to it, and had been approved back then, and again, once, once reviewed, was certainly appropriate for what we're looking for on this site. So again, staff does recommend approval, we have four conditions applying to this. I will explain the third one real quick here. It says utility easement with the purpose to provide site access shall be extended east to incorporate all private lines shown on the plat. What that is referencing is our public easements that exist on the northwest corner of the site. We have private lines that actually extend another 40, 50 feet. That's been taken care of through private easements, through our reciprocal agreement, so we're actually in good shape there at this point. So, still with that, we'll have the four conditions to recommend approval on.
Okay, is your recommendation that we?
Approve.
Approve it, okay. I might vote for it if you can get it open by Christmas. We're ready for it. Okay.
I vote approve the plot.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harret.
With the four conditions.
With the four conditions.
Yeah, with.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Ms. Cindy, it's time for you to tell us about the tax report, please, ma'am.
Well, sales tax, I'm going to make it short because I'm going to start coughing right now. This November sales tax, we collected was $1,426,000, which is $52,000 over last year, but we're down 5.1 percent from two years ago. Totally for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, we're up approximately 5 percent from last year, and we actually budgeted three, so we're just...
So we're doing better than some of the other cities?
Right. Oklahoma, the state as a whole is down. They've been down anywhere between sixteen million and twenty million dollars.
It's because of gas prices, probably?
Yeah, and that has a huge effect, and there's been a lot of layoffs over the process.
Cindy, where did you say that Theaters was?
I'm sorry?
What did you say that Theaters was under? Did you say that information?
Yeah. That was a weird one. I was even shocked the last time, yeah.
Well, it was interesting because I'm not sure if you sent a letter out to Theaters or what, but ours over here on Harrison started charging taxes recently, and we had a number of individuals that were in line that were really disturbed by that.
I think they've always technically charged taxes, but it was like a flat fee of nine dollars, and then they sent it to taxes.
Well, it was about the regular rates. I didn't create a question.
Yeah. I did not know that it had started doing that, and I guess I didn't pay attention the last time I went. So, and as you know, we have to pay two out of three cents back to the marketplace, but that whole center is doing very well.
Are we going to have the ability to break out, is it Hallmark moved from the mall?
Yes, Hallmark moved from the mall to...
We'll have the ability to break that out?
Right. Yes, I have their tax ID number.
We don't pay on that, okay?
We don't pay on that.
And do you have any idea when we're going to get that thing, so that we write the check to them, or is it up to the hunt people, or?
John, do you have any idea?
We're still waiting on end of construction there at the intersection.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
But we are keeping a running tab every month. Every time the reports come out, I do add it to the next.
So we're up 5 percent for the year, but is, if you, once we give them the rebate, are we still up?
Very little.
Very little.
Over the budget, yeah.
Over the budget, yeah.
How many months has Marketplace been open now?
They started opening at the end of February. Wasn't it the end of February?
It was. So it's not quite a year, then?
No. And the majority of them, it's like all days, they open them later.
Yeah, they keep it slow.
And it takes about ninety days before they start hitting the taxes. And you'll see the catch-up. All of a sudden, you see, you know, just a very little, and then you'll see a big hit in the next month it levels out.
And Kickapoo's been open for the last one month, probably, right? Is that about right, or?
Approximately, a little less.
After Nick, it was pretty nice.
Yeah.
I avoided it like playing before because it was...
Any other questions for Cindy?
Relieved the traffic on Harrison and center a little bit.
Hopefully. But people are flying down that road.
Yeah.
Yep. We're going to get rich, the city, when they start writing those tickets out there. Okay, item number nine is city manager update.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner members, I just want to update you on a few items tonight. First of which is the ward boundaries. The city is required after each census to review its ward boundaries and make sure that the population distribution is roughly equal. It's never going to be exactly equal because we need to use obvious boundaries such as streets and natural features, et cetera. But, and so the last census was in 2010, and it takes a couple of years for the more detailed data to become available, the block group data that allows us to do a more detailed analysis. We've completed that analysis and are preparing a presentation to give you on December seventh that will outline any modifications. The modifications overall that are proposed are minor, but there are still some to ensure that we are in compliance with the law. So our plan would be to present that to you on December seventh, and then have a time period where any interested member of the public review it and comment, and then actually have a public hearing and actual ordinance, probably on your first meeting in January. So this is something that we've been working on for the last few months, and we want to make sure that's wrapped up well in advance of the next election. And so I did want to just bring you up to date, because several of you have asked me about that through the last year or so, and I think we're nearing completion on that effort. Fire station number two on Bryan Street, their requests for qualifications from firms were due today. I believe that we received numerous submittals, and so staff will be reviewing those and probably narrowing that search down to a few that may be called in for in-person interviews. And then when that process is complete, a contract will ultimately be presented to you and be on your agenda for approval. That may be late December, likely maybe January, just with the holidays and the timeframe being extended on account of that. So we're still in that process that I outlined, that I've outlined to you previously, but since today was the deadline, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at. Lastly, to talk to you about a couple of projects that are near completion. One is the Park and Recreation Master Plan. That will be presented to the Shawnee Planning Commission on December second, their regular meeting, first Wednesday of the month, and assuming that they make a recommendation for approval, then we believe that will be for you at your first meeting in December, December seventh. So we are looking forward to wrapping that plan up by the end of the year and then having a serious look at implementation strategies and be able to have those discussions with you as we enter the budget process, which we're not that far away, even though it feels like we just adopted the budget. Also, I wanted to update you on the engineering for the auditorium, heat and air. You approved that contract with a consultant several months ago. They've made good progress consistent with their contract, and they're working on getting the construction documents 100 percent complete so that we can take a request before you to authorize staff to go out for bid, hopefully maybe in January, maybe February at the latest, so that we can get that project underway and make sure that we have air conditioning for the hot summer that will be here before we know it. So I know that's an important project to the community and to many of you. Wanted to update you on that as well. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number eleven is commissioners' comments. Any comments from the commissioners?
You mentioned Kickapoo Street earlier. It is nice, but there's still a couple of intersections that have sidewalk work to be done, correct?
Yes, sir.
That all that will be completed?
It is not complete by any means yet. It's near complete, but there are sidewalks and some signalization.
Is there just a delay because of weather or something on completing those last few pieces? It doesn't look like they've been doing any work in the last couple of weeks, two, three weeks on it. Is that just my imagination, or?
I think there's been some, there's been some work.
Yeah, they've got crews over there.
John, John's giving them a big, long punch.
There's still some stuff to dig on, but it is looking really nice.
They were digging up, what was that, the west corner, the northwest corner of Independence and Kickapoo the other night. Yeah, they were like in there working and putting some sidewalk in today, so.
Good.
Justin, are they also doing some work over on Bryan Street, some additional sidewalk work over there? I'd noticed out in front of the retirement center, so.
Yes, we're finishing the trail, which will go to Highland Street. There's a small segment left to be complete, and we'll be improving the, installing a crosswalk system there at the intersection and finishing the other major crossing just north of there. And then we'll continue on with our further implementation of that project, which will include a sidewalk on Independence Street to connect the trail and the neighborhoods to Sequoia Elementary. And we are also, have been informed that I think OG&E is at a point where they're going to begin installation of the lights around the airport trail.
Right.
And so those should be installed this winter.
Well, the one note I saw was that they were doing actual sidewalk work again in front of the retirement center. I wasn't sure if maybe they were adding to it, enhancing it, or what they were doing.
Retirement, I think we had a curb there that we...
Ramps or something?
Yeah, there was a forty-foot rail, and they wanted to get a field, and we picked that out to curb across there.
Great. Appreciate that. And the holiday lights?
Yes.
Knows that those are coming out, so are they all out already, or?
Have you done all the snowplains? Or still, a few left?
I'm not quite sure if those are supposed to be down with those, but there are a few other Christmas decorations we want to have getting ready for the November twenty-eighth Christmas light celebration.
The flags on Main Street, really, are good-looking. I thought that was really cool. Is that a city project? Oh, is that downtown? Group that did that? SEF did that. Wow. Well, they sure look nice down there, the wind carrying them, it's really, that's very, very good. Any other comments? Okay, I will recess to convene the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will call it to order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one on the Airport Authority agenda is consider approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Hall, a second by Vice Mayor Harrod. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is consider bids, construct concrete hard stand OAC project SNL sixteen dash S award. Mr. English?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, the airport staff is requesting the permission from the Airport Authority to award the contract for the OAC Hard Stand project to ATEC Paving out of Oklahoma City. They were the lowest bidder out of three bids in the amount of $107,536, of which $5,376 the airport will be responsible for after the reimbursement from the OAC. Staff recommends awarding to ATEC Paving, and our engineer also recommends them as well.
Okay. Any questions?
That's the airport parking lot, right, or the airplane?
Yeah, that's the concrete aircraft parking. Yeah, apron.
Apron.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second? Okay, by Commissioner Shaw. Let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business for the airport?
No, sir.
Okay. And I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and move to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I will call it to order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Agee. Let's vote. It's all right, I'm like key. Motion carries. Motion carries, okay. Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, item number three is consider an executive session for discussion and possible action regarding potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding the following cases, CPN District Court Case Number CIV 2015-031, Citizens Potawatomi Nation versus Shawnee Municipal Authority, and Oklahoma County District Court Case Number CJ 2015-2455, Shawnee Municipal Authority versus Potawatomi Rural Water District, the Citizens Potawatomi and Oklahoma Resources Board, is authorized by 20S. Is there a motion to go into executive session on this item? Not hearing a motion, then I will reconvene the, sir? Yeah, I guess I didn't adjourn that. So I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority, thank you, sir, and I will call back to order the commission meeting in item number thirteen. I guess it's item number twelve, I'm sorry. Consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding Potawatomi County District Court Case Number CJ 2014-128, the Citizens Potawatomi Nation, Belinda Capes, its vice chairman in Deanna Jesse versus City of Shawnee. Is there a motion to go into executive session on this matter? Not hearing a motion, then I will adjourn our city commission meeting, and thank each and every one of you commissioners for your hard work.